I pledge allegiance to the
The flag
of the United States
of America and to the for which it stands, one nation under God. It is visible with a justice for all.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, Ms. Jones, shall we go ahead and get roll call?
Sure, um, let's see, Commissioner Altman is absent tonight. Commissioner Goff?
Here.
Commissioner Wong?
Here.
Vice Chair Malai?
Here.
Chair Navarro?
Here. Okay. Do you want to go ahead and say your new modified statement?
Sure, pursuant to A B thirty six point one, this meeting will be held entirely virtually. All methods available for public participation are detailed on the first page of the agenda.
Okay. All right, we'll move to a public comment. This is a time that's reserved for members of the public to address the planning commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda and that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City of American Canyon. Planning Commission. It is recommended that speakers limit their comments to three minutes each and is is requested that no comments be made during the period on the items of the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the planning commission on items on the agenda should comment via email prior to the start of the meeting or verbally comment on the item during the meeting. Click the raise your hand button in if joining by computer or press star nine if joining by phone. When the item is when the item is called. The the planning commission is prohibited by law by from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda. And no adverse conclusion should be drawn from if the planning commission does not respond to public comment at this time. Speakers are asked to please speak clearly and provide their name. Any handouts for distribution to the planning commission must be emailed by three P M. on the meeting day. So with that said, is there any public comment, Ms. Jones?
If you'd like to make public comment for a non agenda item, please raise your hand at this time. Going once, going twice. There's no public comment.
Okay, I'll close public comment and ask the director if there are any agenda changes.
Thank you, Chair Navarro. We have no agenda changes for you tonight.
Okay, excellent. So the first item of business is the consent calendar in which we have the minutes from the October twenty third, or I'm sorry, October twenty eighth, twenty twenty one meeting. And the planning commission meeting calendar for this year two thousand twenty two. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Um, I'll I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Okay.
Well, second.
Okay, shall we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Goff?
I.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Vice Chair Malai?
I.
Chair Navarro?
I.
And Commissioner Altman is absent.
Okay. All right. All right, so. Okay, so with that, we can go to the public hearing for. Make sure. Do I have the right one? So the the next item on the agenda is, is it the permit, Napa Cove design permit? Or is that less?
Chair Navarro, the next item would be the housing element update.
Okay, that's what. Okay, sorry about that. Let's go ahead and go to the the next item on the housing element.
Well, he has a presentation for us. He prepares this every year and does a great job.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. The presentation. All right, can everybody see okay?
Yes.
All right, good evening, Chair Navarro, members of the planning commission and members of the public. Very happy to be here today to give the two thousand twenty one calendar year housing element annual progress report. So this is the report that we we provide every year. So we are January twenty twenty two. So this report highlights the work that the the city have accomplished in two thousand twenty one. This report is for the housing element, which was approved in March of twenty fifteen. And the annual housing report is required by state law. Once the report is completed, staff will send the report to the Housing and Community Development Department and the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. So two thousand twenty one was a big year for housing. And let's get right into it. So housing, two thousand twenty one housing stat, status. We usually look at it from three different aspects. One is the the entitlements, which is kind of like the planning and zoning permit. And then the building permits, which gives the applicant the right to instruct. And then lastly, the certificates of occupancy, which the building is fully finished and ready for residents to move in. So entitlements for the city. Last year, we completed three hundred and sixty one units for approvals and entitlements. That is a huge number for us. It it consists of four ADUs, sixty six units from the Napa Cove project, two hundred and ninety one units from the Oak Hill project. We did have three other projects from the Watson Ranch specific plan area, which was Lemos Point, Watson Ranch Lot fourteen and fifteen, and Watson Ranch Lot ten. However, those were already kind of approved through the specific plan in twenty eighteen, I believe. So the state will not let you count it a second time, but altogether, it's a it's a lot of units for for the year. And then in building permits, these were the permits that were reviewed by staff and and issued to the applicants. We received and approved a hundred and ninety two units of building permits. Six of them were ADUs. We we've steadily been seeing at least three or four every year of them now. And we probably will see more of them as this year moving on. And then a hundred and eighty six units from the Lemos Point project, which is within the Watson Ranch specific plan. So lastly, we have the certificates of occupancy. We have two ADUs that were completed. I think that both of them were the the west side of town. And then the hundred and fifty nine units from the Village of Vintage Ranch. I know some of them were completed in twenty twenty, but they were TCOs, they were temporary certificate of occupancies. But all of the units were completed last year in August. So just looking at the numbers for two thousand twenty one, it's it's really a big year for housing and lots of progress, I think, created. So next, we want to talk about the RENA status, which is the Regional Housing Needs Allocation that the state kind of assigned to the city. This is the traditional chart, which shows the number of building permits issued for the city. The the assignment for the twenty fifteen to twenty twenty two housing cycle is three hundred and ninety two units, but they are also split into different categories of housing, which is very low, low income, moderate, and above moderate. In the last five years from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty, there has already been a lot of progress. Completed three hundred and eighty two units. We issued three hundred and eighty two units of housing. But in twenty twenty one, we've issued a hundred and ninety two units. And a lot of that was affordable housing, which which really helped us complete a lot of the the assignment from the state. So now the very low income has been completed and we exceeded the number of of required units. And that's the same for low income and moderate. The only remaining items is twenty one units of above mark moderate housing, which is basically market rate housing. And we'll most likely see that those units being issued this year or or early the year after. So what is A M I? It's the area medium income for Napa County. This is a chart that I I pulled from Napa County. They they update this every year in April. This was for twenty twenty one and the area median income for a household of four is a hundred and nine thousand two hundred dollars. And that number has steadily been increasing. And and so is also the 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 numbers for the very low and low income brackets. So we'll most likely see the twenty twenty two numbers in April of this year. So next, I want to talk a bit about affordable housing in, which is the subcategory of housing overall. There has been some progress there as well, a lot of progress, actually. I want to talk about the affordable housing nexus fee. This is something that I check in with the finance department every year towards the end of the year. And it's a bit lackluster. Last year, we we only received eighty five hundred dollars. But it's kind of like if they provided units, then they don't have to provide the fee. So we we got a lot of units, so we didn't get that much of fees. The eighty five hundred dollars is actually from the friends at the Circle K project that that was the the major contributor there for two thousand twenty one. And as you can see, the previously, we had like the Amazon building in twenty twenty. So it's a lot bigger industrial project. But yeah, we'll we'll see if there's any big commercial and industrial projects this year and we'll probably see an increase in the affordable housing nexus fee. Then there's the units. So as I mentioned earlier, there's a lot of progress there. The Village of Vintage Ranch completed their units, sixteen low and very low income apartment units. They will be designated as affordable housing for twenty years. And then the Lemos Point project, which received their entitlement. And also, they they actually got their building permits issued also. They have a hundred and eighty six minutes for fifty five years. And then lastly, the Napa Cove project, which was just approved last December, is providing sixty six low and very low income units for fifty five years. They've submitted their building permits and it is reviewed by staff now. So next, we have some of the highlights of the whole housing program efforts. So there's been some activity there. I'll go through them quickly. The A D U incentives, American Canyon is part of the Napa Sonoma A U Center. And it's a kind of a coalition to to A D U programming for nine jurisdictions. And the the main thing they did last year was they prepared standard A D U plans that's going to be implemented this year. So this will help prospective A D U applicants kind of find like an easier way to just have standard plans and go through the A D U process. Second, we have affordable housing incentives. So this the city approved two affordable housing projects, the Lemos Point project and the Napa Cove project. Both of them went through a design permit review and they both used the state density bonus to request design standard concession, which the city reviewed and and approved. And lastly, we have the rental assistance program, which is administered by the Housing Authority of the City of Napa, H A C N. And they administered a hundred and forty two section eight vouchers in two thousand twenty one, which thirty four were for the Valley View Senior Apartments. So lots of activity there. I do want to mention, since I just mentioned the Housing Authority. They're they are our contract agency that we have a two year contract with and they help us monitor annual income limits for affordable homes. They they help us process section eight vouchers and also does a considerable amount of outreach for affordable housing. Two aspects that they they focus on as well is the owner occupy rehab program and also the first time home buyers program. So very grateful to have them help us with the affordable housing questions and and processing like that. And that was it. That's it for two thousand twenty one, but let's look ahead to two thousand twenty two. I've broken it up to three segments as well, the entitlements, the building permits, and then the construction. In two thousand twenty two, we looked forward to more A D Us. Probably three or four a year, maybe maybe increased up to like five or six this year. The residences at Napa Junction is a project that's north is the big balloon shaped project that's north of the Reliant Apartments. They're proposing about four hundred something units there, which is which is probably one of the largest housing projects in the city. They submitted a pre application last year, which we provided comments on. And they mentioned that they will submit their formal application probably in spring of this year. Another one that we are watching out for is the Sun Square Mixed Use Project. This is a a smaller twenty unit project that's going to be in the back of the Walmart, except for twenty five, Napa Junction Road. It's going to be a mixed use office and single bedroom apartment project and they submitted last year in October. Staff provided comments and we suspect they'll submit sometime in spring this year as well. Next, we have building permits. These are permits that are in review now and we are processing and we hope to have them issued next year. Definitely the Watson Ranch projects, both the lots fourteen fifteen and lot ten, they're in review. Then we have the Oak Hill Apartments, the two hundred and ninety one apartments units up on Oak Hill, west of the City Hall. Then the Napa Cove project, which they they're they're hopefully going to get their building permits by the end of March. That's their target. And lastly, we have the thirty five units of the Canyon Estates Custom Homes. I I think you guys noticed the grading activity. It's north of the high school, east of North Drive. They think they're getting their pads together and mostly likely they'll have their building permits submitted and reviewed this this year. And then in construction, we hope to see the Lemos Points Apartments as well as the Napa Cove Apartments. The Lemos Points Apartments was the supposed to be the prefab apartments. So they they could most likely have see them come in sometime this year. Then housing programs in two thousand twenty two, there's always new new things to learn about from the state. First, we'll have the Napa Cove section eight vouchers that the Housing Authority of Napa is helping us review and administer. Then there's this new Senate Bill nine, which is a a new state law that was approved September of last year and is in effect January first, which allows homeowners to subdivide their homes administratively. So we'll read into more of that this year and see how that will impact our single family buying units. We're going to be doing our sixth cycle housing element update. So the fifth cycle is ending at the end of this year and sixth cycle starts in two thousand twenty three. So we'll be beginning to start the groundwork to complete that. And then we'll we're also doing our general plan update. So we'll make sure that the housing element is consistent with the general plan land use amendments. So lots of housing activity in in the program side as well as in the construction side overall. But two thousand twenty one was definitely a big year. So the next steps is giving this presentation to the city council on March first and then wrapping up any last minute things with the report and sending it over to the state in prior to April first. So that's it for the housing element two thousand twenty one report. You have any questions or comments? Let me know.
Okay, all right, thank you. So just to be clear, this is for us, it's we're not really approving, we are accepting for filing and and then unless we have some sort of comments that or issues that change something that would then you would take to city council for another hearing. So with that, why don't we see if there's any public comment, Ms. Jones?
If there's still any public comment, please raise your hand now. Okay, going once. There is no public comment from any of the attendees. It looks like a panelist raised their hand, but then lowered their hand. So.
Okay. All right, we'll close public comment and open questions up to the commissioners from the commissioners or comments.
I got one. I'm just curious because I was looking, seems like the allotment based on, you know, very low income, low income, which is handled out by the state. Is that correct? Is that who goes that out or is there?
What's the formula behind it?
Yeah. I was wondering about how that compares because that was presented to us by the city. Yeah, the average income is based on the county. Is that just normally is that what happens with that? That's my curiosity there.
I guess I guess it's two questions. If you're asking how the numbers for Reno was assigned, I think that is signed by the state. How the the area median income is is divvied up and how it changes every year, that's from the house, H C D, the Housing Development Department. And they assign it to Napa County and we just use those numbers.
And then, you know, our percentages were were exceeding up and down the board for most of them, except for the above average, I think it was, or the median above. How does that compare with other municipalities up down the valley? Any idea, you know?
I don't think I have compared the progress of like our neighbors of completing their Reno, but I think we're in good shape overall.
Well, it looks like we were in good shape, but I was reading some information really about how the valley is being settled or built out and comes to income per household and family. And the information was really that a valley is not really doing as much for the low income and the very low income. Yet South County, we're doing a lot. That's very evident in our housing, I want to know, numbers right there. So I was just curious if that is something that people are reading into or if there's anything behind that that you guys are aware of.
Actually, Goff, William is very efficient and he was able to compile this year's report, I think, ahead of the other jurisdictions in Napa County. We can do a follow up and see how they're doing, but I do know that we stack up very well, even statewide. We're one of a handful of jurisdictions in among the four hundred plus in the state that is meeting its and exceeding its regional housing needs assessment allocation, which, by the way, the the state comes up with how many units they think will be needed statewide. And then they allocate it to each of the regions in the state. And then our region is the Association Bay Area Governments. And then the A BAG, Association Bay Area Governments, they go through a very extensive and complicated process to to allocate it among the hundred plus jurisdictions in the Bay Area.
Okay, that's I remember that and I'm I guess that's my curi- curiosity is looking at some of those numbers and those allocations on how they fall out by municipality within the county. That's really my question, but or yeah, my curiosity, I guess.
Our city has has really shown leadership in in housing development and approvals in the county and and if not broader.
Yeah, well, we, I mean, as it showed there, done an excellent job and it's been a very good year for when it comes to housing. And it looks like, you know, for the next few years, it's going to be a pretty good year when it comes to housing in the city. That's all I got. Thank you. An excellent job, Lee.
Any any comments from other commissioners? Commissioner Wong?
Thank you, Chair Navarro. Um, William, thank you for the great report. I I was wondering, this may have come up in our earlier discussions. But can you remind me, how is it determine the lifespan where the units will remain affordable housing? On one of your slides, I noticed one specific subdivision was twenty years and and the rest were like fifty five years. So how does it happen that it's decided the duration of that low income restriction?
Well, the the two projects that went through the Napa Cove and Lemos Point both went through the density bonus program. They were required to do fifty five years. Whereas the Village of Vintage Ranch, that was before my time. So I'm not too clear how did that get concluded.
I I have some history. If fifty five years is is really the standard now for for when there is affordable housing, that is the current standard today. The Village of Vintage Ranch was an approval that occurred in two thousand six. And because of the recession, the state legislature extended these old approvals when they would normally expire. And unfortunate and at that time in two thousand six, the standard was ten years. And that's the case with the Lodge and Napa Junction Apartments. Those were, they had an inclusionary component that lasted ten years and expired and and unfortunately, we lost those units. But the applicant for the Village of Vintage Ranch was a little slow at getting their building permits and ended up running into a situation where they were on the eve of an expiration and had to go to the city council to get an extension and and the extra, the bump from from ten to twenty years was the price they had to pay to get that extension. So we're really lucky. It is a much more lenient standard than today, but it's it's more than what was required back in the day when it was who could imagine two thousand six? It's such a long time ago. That feels like yesterday, but at that time, the standard was ten years and now it's it's really changed a lot.
And and that change is statewide, right? It's not specific or is it specific to Napa? And, and that change is statewide, right? It's not specific, or is it specific to Napa County? It's not specific to American Canyon, right?
It's not specific to American Canyon. Um I can't tell you exactly the standard that it is. I think it may even be a federal standard.
Hmm, okay.
For affordable housing now, for a lot of the loan programs when uh for federal funding and, and maybe the state as well. Um, that's kind of the, when you get funding for affordable housing, they want to make sure it stays affordable a long time, and, and that's now the current standard.
Thank you, Director Cooper. That makes great sense, and it's very, as I said, that transparency. I see why that one is twenty years and the rest are fifty five, because fifty five is a nice, significant number for the community that need low income housing. Um, I know there was one public comment received in writing prior to the meeting from Albert Donaldson. And um would it be appropriate at this time if we could get some, maybe some answers for him about some of the points he raised? Um, Chairman Varo, or would you like to take that, discuss that later?
Uh, Commissioner Wong, I think those comments were with respect to um something other than what's on the agenda tonight.
Oh, okay, so I thought it was talking about affordable housing, sorry.
It's, but it's, it's relation to um uh an agenda item for the City of Napa Housing Authority.
Oh, okay, thank you. Thank you for um that correction. I appreciate it.
Okay.
I'm just curious, so the, the numbers come down from the state. And say, for instance, that we're, we've kind of outgrown and we outbuild and we don't have any more numbers that we can exceed. How does that work with the state? Do we just kind of petition out, or what, what, what happens then?
Vice Chairman, are you referring to if we exceed our, our regional housing needs? Is there, is like a, some, like. A benefit we get from that, or is that your concern?
Like if we don't meet it, say if we don't meet it, and then the new year comes and, you know, they continuously add on to, to the next, how does, how does that equate?
We've had the luxury of not having to dig into it, but as we look forward to the next housing element. Um, the state is scrutinizing housing elements like they've never done before. I don't think they're doing it on their own volition. I think there's, there's state requirements for that. But there is tremendous scrutiny with this next cycle. So if uh if we were underwater with our housing allocation accomplishments, um I would expect we would. Um have a much more difficult time uh with the next housing element.
Okay. So if we, if we meet our, if we, so what, since you mentioned it. Um, are there also incentives or benefits to, to uh exceeding the, as, as it looks like we're on track to do? I've done.
Uh, there, there is kind of a competition for transportation funds. That will be allocated to the top fifteen jurisdictions in the state for achieving affordable housing. And um we'll know uh soon whether we're still in the running, but, but midway through the session, the amount of growth that the city had. Um puts the city in a position of getting some additional transportation funds. So there are benefits to being able to achieve um the affordable housing requirements in our housing element.
And, and is there an entity that ensures there's kind of those, these goals are set up fair and equitable? So that they aren't pushing. Um, more low income in different areas. I mean, it's, there's some formula that. Creates a s- uh sort of equanimity in all areas based on population, transportation, something like that, right? Just wanted to clarify.
So if anyone's ever worked with the tax code. You realize that there's a lot of provisions in there that's kind of complicated. It's um, the housing allocation is kind of similar.
Okay.
There, there's a methodology, it's a very complicated process, and fortunately, we, the city is able to. Because of its foresight in approving housing entitlements. Um, it hasn't been um a burden here, but in many jurisdictions that hasn't done that, it's a really big problem. But um the way the methodology looks at is for those jurisdictions that have um high incomes. And few low income units have gotten higher allocations of low income units to kind of compensate.
Okay.
So uh they kind of try to balance things out. There are other um allowances in state law that um allow for transfers of these regional housings among jurisdictions. But that's kind of a negotiated settlement uh among them. But it's, it's a pretty complicated process with um different stages along the way and appeals that are possible and, and the like. And, and we've been very fortunate that we haven't had to mire in all of that. Uh I do want to sort of maybe as a, as since we're kind of talking a little bit about the regional housing needs. There are two agreements that American Canyon has with Napa County. One was approved in twenty ten when Watson Ranch property was annexed into the city. There's an agreement from that that spanned two housing element cycles, and this is the second of two. Where there is um an allocation from the county that we must absorb. And then um the county contributed two point two million dollars towards the Valley View project in twenty seventeen. That also came with an obligation to accept some of their affordable housing requirements for this cycle. And actually, just before this meeting, I got a memo from the um director in Napa County. Um uh clarifying how they would like to invoke their um obligations on us, which we were expecting, and it's agreed. It's all fine, and we can come here.
Okay. All right, um I don't have any other questions, any other questions, uh comments from commissioners? Oh, Commissioner Wong, please.
Yes, I'm Director Cooper. Thanks for bringing up about the um transfer agreements among jurisdictions. I am curious about that. So you've said we have two agreements with Napa County, and they're open for two housing cycles. So how close are we to fulfilling our obligations under those transfer agreements? I mean, I think you said one was forthcoming. I mean, or, or when do they close out, I guess? Can you give a little bit more detail on that?
So, so we have two agreements. One was from twenty ten, um and that was Watson Ranch, and that one spanned two housing cycles. So the last housing element, um there was an obligation to accept some of the county's regional housing needs. And that cycle was, was a, was one where everyone in Napa County got a really low Reno allocation. So they actually didn't need to use it. But this time around, the states really amped up the obligations. And so um the county is, is going to be requesting that the city um accept some additional uh. Reno units that was allocated to them, but that's all already spelled out in an agreement, and it covers this cycle. And so this time they need it and they, they want to use it. There's a second agreement that was approved in twenty ten that was only for this one, this coming cycle. It didn't span two cycles, just this one here, and that was for the county's contribution of two point two million dollars for the Valley View project.
You're muted. Commissioner Wong.
Thank you, Chairman Varo. So. It sounds like if I understand correctly, with both of those agreements, then they will both expire, our, our obligation will end with this housing cycle.
That's correct.
But we don't, do we know yet what our obligation will be under those agreements?
Um, yes, we do, and I actually just got a letter requesting um that the city acknowledge it. Um, just like right before our meeting, and they actually are asking us to accept less than what the agreements could call for.
Oh, excellent. Okay, um, thank you so much for um sharing that information, because it's something that. Kind of gets thrown around a lot, and it's nice to have the details behind that as to what it really means and, and what it applies. I, I look forward to um more updates about this the next time it, you know, comes around. Thank you.
I can share, um I may just got it before our meeting tonight, so I can share this memo with the planning commission. Just so you can see for yourself kind of what does the agreement say, and what's the county asking, and why, and um David Morrison did a good job of explaining all of it.
Oh, I'd be very interested in seeing that if you can share it. Thank you.
Okay, that would be really great. Yeah, I, I look forward to it, too. Um, so um great presentation. I remember last time's presentation was really good, so thank you, um Mr. He for. That presentation. Just uh double check, is there any public comment? Let me go ahead and open public comment.
Does anybody have public comments? Nobody's raising their hand.
Okay. All right, we will close public comment on this item. And um. And we don't need to take any voter action on this, right? Okay. All right, so uh next item is um. The um, the Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair selection for this year for two thousand and twenty two. I uh forgot the process um to do this. I guess we just take, now, if, if I recall. It was just pretty informal. We just. Take volunteers or nominate. Um, so is anybody? And I, I, I think we do, we'll go with the chair and then the vice chair. Um, so, so go ahead.
Chairman Varo, if I remember correctly, we had some discussion about this last time, and we really talked about trying to rotate chair responsibilities. Um, and I think at that one point in time, because Mr. Altman served for chair for, I don't know how long he was chair. He was chair for a very long time.
Right.
Um, and the idea of sharing up within the council, which I really thought was a good idea. Um, and keeping that in mind, you know, look at, well, Commissioner Malari, who's been vice chair this year. Ascension into chair, and Commissioner Wong, who has not been yet either one of those positions, kind of rotates in and fills in in the vice chair capacity. That was my thinking around this, um in the nature of what we had discussed previous.
Um, actually, those were my thoughts exactly. Um, I, um, so.
Yeah, that exactly was my, my thought as well, like that I re, uh as I was reading through the agenda, I said. And remember this conversation, what are, what, what's going to come out of it? So I think that it's definitely a, a good rotation in, in, in a good direction. To give everybody the ability to, to be in a chair or vice chair position.
Right.
I concur.
This is a true, yeah. Okay, so um. So uh Commissioner Goff, you want to nominate, or you want Malari, you want to Commissioner Malari, Vice Chair Malari, you want to. Uh nominate yourself for chair?
Why nominate myself?
I think we, it, it works either way, right?
Do it for you, that way you know it's easier.
Okay.
I'll be happy to nominate Commissioner Malari for the chair position.
Okay, and um, and I'd like to nominate uh Commissioner Wong for vice chair.
Thank you.
Uh, I will second both, both of those nominations if I can.
All right.
Yeah.
So, so being that they're accepted, um, um Ms. Jones, can we uh have a roll call and, and vote on uh? Uh, the election of uh Chairman Larry and Vice Chair Wong?
Yes, of course. Um Commissioner Altman is absent. Commissioner Goff?
Eye on both.
Okay, Vice Chair, uh excuse me, Commissioner Wong?
I.
Vice Chair Malai?
I, I.
Chairman Navarro?
I. Here you go. You're right next to me on my screen. Here's the gavel for next one.
We could just, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we want a round of applause for our new nominees. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Honored to be serving.
All right, great, excellent. Okay, so we've uh accomplished uh that part of business. Is there any um, any? Okay, I guess we just go into management staff or reports, or go into the active um planning projects online right now?
All right, I'll just, I'll just kind of go over the, the juicy parts of what's going on in the department.
Okay.
Uh, well, this one may not be juicy so much, but it's tasty. It's the um El Pollo Loco Taco uh truck. It's um a new one. Um this one's proposed um at the Napa Valley Casino site. Um, the Napa Valley Casino actually had been approved for a food trailer. So it is a easy, an easy modification to go from a food trailer to a food truck. So um that's a staff level approval, and um. I think he, William, I think they've already, did they get approved? I think we had a draft letter for them.
Not yet. They have to finish uh some, some of the payment part of it.
Oh, yeah.
So um most likely next week, but it's a pretty quick.
Yeah, it's pretty easy. Um, see, item number five, um the Fume project, which was approved. A year ago, I think. Um, they have taken on a partner and um they have proposed some site plan changes. So they're kind of working through that, but that's a, also a minor modification to that use permit that the planning commission approved. Um, this partner would do delivery, and then Fume would do manufacturing and cultivation. So they kind of divided their, their areas of responsibility. Um, and then number eight, the Napa Cove, that is something that is on the agenda for the Napa Housing Board. On uh February first, um the Napa Housing Authority has obtained eight section eight vouchers. For the project, which is really great, because um the way section eight vouchers work is the tenants pay market rate. And section, the voucher makes up the difference between what the tenant can afford and a market rate. And so this is able to help the affordable project be more financially feasible. Uh, and so it's really nice of um the Housing Authority to go out and, and get these vouchers uh for the project. The other thing, too, that's maybe a distinction that most of us may not be aware of. Sometimes a section eight voucher goes with a person, and then they take that and go to try to find housing. And, and there's been a lot of discrimination, uh landlord discrimination for people with those vouchers. They would just prefer to rent them to people who don't need subsidies. These vouchers are tied to the units, so it doesn't matter who, I mean, this unit, you know, they have a unit, and it's a section eight unit. Um, and so whoever's moving into that unit will be a section eight recipient. And so um there's no, you don't have to worry about a landlord not accepting them unless they want to bake an unit. So um it's a nice, it's a nice setup.
But they're, they, they are, they are kind of distributed, so that's not like a setting up of this area for section eight. You know, kind of the whole ghettoizing concept, right? It, it's distributed somehow uh through, through the, through the facility, right?
Mm-hmm, that's right, and, and uh the, the Napa Cove is, is, is all um uh of affordable projects. So of one, two, and three bedroom units, so it's a wide range of people who might live there, which is a nice way to go. Concomitant families, um and so uh it's. And, and the range of incomes as well, too. It's not just one type. It's, it's, it's a wide range, so this is a good project. Um, also, as, as, as William mentioned, the, the Sun Square project. Um, is the smaller one off of Napa Junction Road next to Walmart. And I think they're, they've just about to or will soon resubmit um their project from comments that we gave them, I think, last summer. It's been kind of a slow go, um but there's, I think they have a redesign in mind, but it'd be nice to see some mixed news.
Vice Chairman, I have a question for you.
Jumping all over each other.
Oh, I'm sorry, I see a hand.
Yeah.
There you are, bouncing around, sorry.
Um, can I go back and ask you a question? So on the, so I was curious, so Napa Cove is in. Um, can I go back and ask you a question? So on then, so I was curious. So Napa Cove is entirely affordable housing. So by getting the section eight vouchers for eight units, that means on eight units, the um whoever manages that project, they're going to get market rate for eight units because the state of California is paying the gap. Is that what it means essentially?
Um, I believe it's federally funded.
Oh, federally funded. Okay, okay. So I was, okay, thank you.
Yeah, the it's, you know, affordable housing is expensive um because the units are subsidized. So if fewer units are subsidized, then it's it makes it easier, you know, with uh it's always difficult with affordable housing. I remember even with uh Valley View, they had value engineering efforts, the costs, they always seem to be more expensive. Uh, and the same is true with this one as well. So it's gonna be nice to help with the financial feasibility.
How how long does that section eight voucher last for these units? And do we know if it's the one, two or three bedroom units?
Um, the project has a fifty five year um affordable term.
So the section eight will last for the entirety of the fifty five year term?
Um, I'm gonna need to learn a little more about this. Uh, there's a staff report that was just published today um for Tuesday's meeting. So um I can, I can also send the commission a link to that, but but find out some of that as well and put that in my email the following.
Oh, thank, thank you.
Because you're not my, it's not my field of expertise either, so that's why I'm so grateful for the Housing Authority. But um those are great questions. I can get the answers to it. Um, let's see, the Givernoy Logistics Center, that of course is a large project, industrial um on Green Island Road. And um we are, I think, ready uh this week to give them the comments on the administrative draft environmental impact report, which is a big milestone. So we'll be looking forward to that going out for public review this spring. Hopefully. Let's see. Are the fuel uh service station ordinance that the commission uh saw in November is going to be going for second reading to the council. It was approved by the council on January eighteenth and it goes for a second reading on February first. And so that's scheduled. It's approved then that it would take effect on March third. It's coming along. Um, at your next meeting, I believe we should be ready to bring back the P G D landscaping plan. We've had a couple of reviews and they are in fact going to be providing the square footage that they would have that so and some to sit and some evergreen trees and things for true screening, so pretty excited about that, but we'll get you, let you take a look at that. And then I'd like to have um kind of a workshop introduction on the housing element, um, kind of get that going um for for the planning commission. And that's my update.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Are there any commissioner items? Okay, seeing none. I guess we're ready for adjournment. This is uh a good start to the new year. Uh, short and concise and thorough. So uh, so I guess I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting and uh and uh welcome the new, the new chair and vice chair at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy New Year since it's our first meeting.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, and happy uh Lunar New Year coming up. Yep.
Oh, that's right. Yep.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.
You guys, take care. Have a great evening.
Bye bye. You too.